Members, we've got a quorum already. Let's invite the administration in. We only have one item on the agenda. Medium and long-term social welfare planning. So please invite the officials in.
跟住可以講翻去啦個個都
我都要啊
早晨都系，早晨
There is a clash with another meeting. We have the education panel meeting going on in another conference room. Members, all have ample time to discuss this item. So we will adjourn at about half past twelve. The secretary, I believe, will first of all take us through the paper. And I thank the secretary for having prepared the paper for us. Thank you. Secretary, please.
Chairman, there was a meeting of the panel on the nineteenth of February. And over sixty deputations attended that meeting. We discussed the medium and long-term social welfare planning in Hong Kong. And then the secretariat gave us a paper on the various areas of concern, including universal retirement protection and other issues. We've already prepared this detailed paper for members' reference. And I want to say something about welfare planning and retirement protection in particular. I believe members are most interested in these two topics. We are very concerned about welfare planning. Like members, we are extremely concerned. And we understand that members want us to do our best with regard to welfare planning. So we need a new mindset. We have to do things proactively. And we have to come up with concrete measures and policies to deal with the problems brought about by an aging population. For example, the waiting time for RCHs is too long, and there are many other problems. And so this term of government will focus on the following two issues. First of all, shortage of places. And then second, great demand for such services. And so we need to invest more resources in this field. And we also need to pay attention to hardware as well as the hardware as well as the software. So in the future, we will try to secure more resources for social welfare services. And this year's budget will have an additional thirteen billion dollars from forty-two point seven billion to over fifty billion dollars on social welfare, an increase of over ten percent. Now, some may feel that most of the extra funding will go to the OALA. But I want to point out that about one to two billion dollars will be additional or new money for the expansion of our services. And concerning subvention to NGOs, the amount will exceed ten billion dollars. Now, Chairman, this is important because without necessary resources, we can't really do our planning work. And the Social Welfare Advisory Committee has come up with a planning mechanism. And this mechanism is already being implemented. First of all, at the district level, the district social welfare officer identifies the strict demands and challenges. And then the second level, or the second tier, is the central level, comprising the bureau and the department. And the third tier, or the third level, is the various committees or commissions, the Women's Commission, the RAC, and the SWAG, and so on and so forth. We now have a lot of cooperation with the HKCSS. In fact, every year in June, we hold a dialogue with organizations under the HKCSS. We have a whole-day brainstorming session to listen to their views. For example, areas where the government has not done enough, priorities for the government, and so on and so forth. And the director, as well as directorate officers, and also district social welfare officers, attend this whole-day brainstorming session with members of the HKCSS. Now, when we do our planning work, we can't be divorced from reality. We need to know the views of the users and also their demands. In the past two months, this term of government adopted a new approach. And again, this is very important, and we can strengthen our cooperation of the HKCSS. This is in relation to the hardware. Now, concerning size, we have short-term, medium-term, and long-term policies. For short-term measures, we try to identify suitable premises in public housing estates for welfare services. And also, we have the board play scheme applied to RCHs and RCHDs. And then we may also identify vacant school premises, for example, for welfare services. And then we have to identify some new projects. For example, East Kowloon, Kai-Tech, urban renewal projects. We try to try our best to find suitable opportunities in these projects. And we know that, in fact, some NGOs, in fact, do have space in the premises, and there can be expansion or redevelopment. But they want to know how much support the government can give to them. So we really have to do a lot more in this regard. We need to tackle the problem of land or premises at source. Now, for example, there may be an RCH or an RCHD. And maybe adjacent to the premises, there's a car park. I've been to Wong Tai Sien, and there's this RCH providing two hundred and fourteen nursing places. And there is a car park right next to the premises. You know, at the moment, for nursing homes, the waiting time is thirty-seven months. So there's a great demand for nursing home places, and so we should make use of that site. We need to try to engage the NGOs. And we need to flexibly make use of the lottery's fund to support the expansion and redevelopment works. And thirdly, this is very important, that is to help NGOs or steer NGOs through government procedures, including time planning board procedures. This is important because very often NGOs may encounter difficulties when they go through these procedures. So we are in the course of discussing these issues with the HKCSS. And Chairman, I'm glad to tell you that some heads of NGOs have approached me, indicating that they are interested to redevelop certain vacant sites or premises that they have. So I want to tell you that we are not just making empty promises, Chairman. In fact, we are doing our very best. But of course, we need the necessary software as well as the hardware. We understand that in the next decade or two, we'll need a lot of manpower supply to serve the elderly, medical services as well as welfare services. Over regard to physiotherapists, occupational therapists, frontline care workers, and nurses, there will be a great demand for these staff. So we will increase the number of training places. In the budget, the financial secretary has earmarked one hundred and sixty million dollars for our bureau and for the SWD to train one thousand two hundred and forty registered nurses in the next few years, or enrolled nurses in the next few years. And after receiving a training, they have to serve in the welfare sector for two years. So we've already started twelve classes, and some of the classes have been completed. And so we're going to continue to do our work in this regard. And we have a great demand for physiotherapists and occupational therapists. Last year, the Polytechnic University started some self-financing courses to train PTs and OTs. But then SWD encourages organizations to hire these people first, and then allow them to go attend training courses. And we've also got master courses. And we've also secured more resources for UGC-funded institutions to provide more places for nursing courses, undergraduate, I mean undergraduate places for nursing, and also the training of PTs and OTs.
For health workers and other carers, there is a gross shortage as well. We have discussed the aging population problem, and many of the carriers themselves are quite advanced in age. How can we attract new blood into the trade? Last year, we set up a trade advisory committee so that we can create a qualification framework for these people to become even more professional, so that we can retain their manpower, and so that we can show them the prospect of joining the trade. We like to attract new blood into the caring industry. Especially later, if we will have service vouchers and also aging in place, we need a lot of these people, and we'll continue to do this. So basically, I have given you an account of the fact that we would like to align planning with the needs of the community. Second, I'd like to talk about retirement protection. I think this has featured quite prominently in the press in the last few days. I'd like to reiterate that this term government understands perfectly the importance of having retirement protection. Therefore, under the COP, there is a task force on social security and retirement protection. It had a meeting on the eighteenth. And the CS4A also told the media what happened. And also, in the special house committee meeting last Friday, the CS has already given you an account. And we have commissioned Dr. Nelson Chow to look into the issue. First of all, we'd like to review the so-called three pillars, the MPFA, the social security system, and also personal savings, to see whether this is sustainable in the long term. And at the same time, now, this is the important point. There are many different voices in the community, including the political parties and also the Joint Alliance on Retirement Protection. We'll also analyze the views of academics. Then our committee can try to see how we can forge a consensus within a year. Well, Dr. Nelson Chow has already said that whenever he's ready, he'll share with us the data. So in the long term, we can map out the way forward. I hope a consensus can be forged soon. Chairman, I'd like to reiterate that we will work on both hardware and software. We are concerned about the PWDs, the elderly, and also the manpower complement. We hope the service can really be comprehensive and sustainable to meet the needs of the community. Thank you. Thank you, Bureau Secretary. I'd like to give each member five minutes. If at a certain stage there are no more questions, then we will have another round. I believe we have very ample time at the meeting today. Dr. Fernando Zhang, thank you, Chairman.
This is about long-term planning for welfare. I think this is one of the areas where we have performed the worst. The government's paper says the five-year plan mechanism lacks flexibility, so it will not be used anymore. And after there is the lumps some ground, it means there is just no planning. There is just centralization of power. You talk about consultation, that there is a consultation framework. But the operation of these frameworks are not transparent. There are no meeting agendas, no minutes. And everybody on these committees and advisory bodies have been appointed. Every year, there is one or two so-called consultation with the profession and NGOs. And as the Bureau Secretary said, there will be one day, a full day's dialogue with the NGOs. But then there is no agenda. There is no record. A few years ago, some venue was rented from a hotel, and then there was a venue at some public facility. And this time around, it will be at Hong Kong CSS. But what are we going to do about the aging of the population? What about our young people who face a lot of problems in employment? And their development outside the employment market? What about childcare? There is no planning at all. Everything is so messed up. And you say that the previous mechanism lacks flexibility. But Chairman, we have come a long way, haven't we? The previous planning mechanism was well-established and also very flexible. It is a rolling-forward five-year planning period. But now we no longer have it, and everything is in a mess. Even if you look at this paper, so-called long-term planning paper, where do you see youth services? You have concentrated on the elderly and the PWDs and rehabilitation. And even there, there is not a comprehensive coverage. You only talk about institutionalized care, et cetera, et cetera. What about home care? This is what is happening. It's all in a mess. Wherever there is a bigger outcry, they would just address that area. So this is not planning. We don't even have planning papers. Is this already the planning paper? We are in the twenty-first century. We are in a so-called international metropolis. But this is what social welfare planning we have. And okay, let me go to a specific point. Let me just talk about PWDs and also institutions for the elderly. These people have been subject to government assessment to say that they need institutionalized care. In the paper, the administration actually says that there is no way they can set a target as to within what kind of a timeframe they will be given the service. Chairman, these people are weak and frail. They have been assessed by government that they need to be institutionalized. The secretary admits that many PWDs have to wait for ten years, which is unacceptable. Twenty thousand, thirty thousand elderly people are waiting for RCHs. And every year, five thousand leave us. But the new places are only in the region of six hundred every year. This is unproportional. The secretary says they would find more land, they would provide more support, and they would provide hundreds more places every year. But thousands are dying every year, and tens of thousands are waiting. You only talk about supply. But how can you turn a blind eye to demand? What kind of planning is there? And you say you can set a target on the timeframe, about how long people have to wait. You say there are many variables. What kind of planning do we have here? Frankly, family members cannot take care of the elderly, and they have no choice. You have not been building sufficient subsidized RCHs, and there is no community support. And you say, yes, we are already increasing manpower. You talk about supply. But last month, we said that there are eight thousand places, but then a thousand of them are not filled. Nobody wants to do this. So you just drone on with what you are doing, but you are quite blind to reality. If you call this planning, then you do not need to do your planning. Chairman, I think you've stopped my five minutes. Sorry. Okay, you can kill again. I think you have made general remarks. In the second round, perhaps you can be more specific. Tang Cup you. Dr. Fernando Zhang mentioned RCHs and RCHDs. Those are our concerns as well. The administration says that this term of government will be a brand-new government. It will have new style, a new style, and a new mentality that is going to do a lot of things. But you do not have the stamina to do it. Even for public housing, you talk about a waiting time of three years, so people know the broad direction you are taking. But here, you are not doing your job. If you say you have a new mentality, why can't you also show the vigor to do something? You should tell people the broad picture. For example, if there are a hundred and eighty thousand elderly people who have been centrally assessed, what are you going to do for them? What is your pledge? That within a certain time, they will be given institutionalized care, and while they wait, there will be community care? You say you are doing your best, but then there are no targets. So we can't see any stamina in trying to achieve your target. Secondly, since the secretary is here today, you are also an important member of the COP. I'd like to mention two points. That within the year, there will be the setting of a poverty line. I'd like to know in certain terms, what kind of complementary measures there will be or policies there will be after the poverty line is drawn up? Will there be subsidies for low-income families? What are the complementary measures? Secondly, retirement protection. I think you're moving too slowly. Of course, you can say Dr. Nelson Chow will not represent the government. But then, he has said that within the term, this cannot be started. He will do the research, but then how many more terms of government do we have to wait before we see something done? Because new terms of government may not want to continue the initiatives of the last. And this is what you are doing. So are you just passing the buck? Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Tang. I'd like to thank your two questions. And then later on, I also like to respond to Dr. Fernando Zhang. The target time for providing institutionalized care. Why can't we give a waiting time of three years like the Housing Authority?
Actually, in the past few years, I have been working very hard to try to achieve a breakthrough. I have discussed with many parties, but then there are many constraints. I have answered oral questions in this respect. Let me repeat. First of all, of course, we know that we should provide the institutionalized places to elderly people as soon as possible. Why have they been waiting for over thirty months? This is because many things are outside our control. This is because elderly people would prefer certain districts. Sometimes, they don't say Kowloon East, but they specifically say Wong Tai Sien or Kuen Tong. Secondly, religious background requirements. And also, if the spouse is already in a certain home, the elderly person may specify that particular home, and we have to respect these personal wishes. Secondly, many people would like to wait for subsidized homes. They are not even interested in A1 board places. We have seven thousand A1 places, and you know we also have A2 places. These are board places. I have said that if an elderly person is not choosy, and he or she just wants a subsidized housing regardless of the district, regardless of whether it is subsidized or bought, because we have quality assurance. If he is not choosy, it should not be more than three months before we can assign a place. And if we fast-track it, it can be within a month. But then you must not choose any district, location, or any home. We have spread the message. But then elderly people still would like to choose a place in their own district. That I understand, because there is a community network already, and it's easy for the relatives to visit them. So we fully understand this. However, Secretary, I also like to listen to you say something on retirement protection. But then what about community care while they wait? This is where the problem is. They lack either service. However, they have been assessed to say that they need the service.
Okay, about community care, you are correct. Dr. Zhang also mentioned this, that we have no particular plan to do this. We like to emphasize that elderly people should age in place, and institutionalized care should just be a kind of support. I fully understand that we need to step up aging in place. Within this term of government, there will be more resources, including a pilot on service vouchers, so we can give flexible service with higher quality. Mr. Albert Ho. I need to have a second round, please. Mr. Albert Ho.
Yes, Chairman. Mr. Fernando Zhang has already asked this question, and the secretary didn't have time to give a reply. Now, when you carry out long-term planning, one of the most important objectives is to be able to tell the public what's going to happen. Say, five years down the road or seven years down the road. In other words, what your mission or what your vision is, I beg your pardon. You want to know how you can make use of the social security system to bring about improvements to people's livelihood. So what are your plans? Some people say that we have over a million people in Hong Kong who are classified as some poor people. There are elderly persons who have to live on the rooftop. There are some who have to collect cartons and sell them in order to make a living. And some elderly persons have to lead a lonely elderly life till they die. We keep talking about Hong Kong being a caring place. But I think we can't just chant the slogan without doing anything. Think we have to really try to come up with some measures or solutions to these problems. I understand that if you talk about your vision, that people will ask you how you're going to step by step realize this vision. And I understand that even if you put forward a vision, you will not be able to realize that. But at least, when we know your vision, we can then judge whether you have the determination, whether you've carried out necessary planning to try to realize those goals. Sometimes you tell us that there aren't enough sites sometimes to say there is a shortage of manpower supply. RCHs, RCHDs, poverty alleviation, retirement protection. All these require long-term and detailed planning. You're telling us today that you need to carry out studies. You're telling us that some people have religious preferences, district preferences. And you've just told us that, in fact, if for those who have no particular preferences, they can get a place between one to three months. Is this your undertaking? I've never been told that if an elderly person has no particular preferences, then he or she can get a place between one to three months or within one to three months' time. We are unhappy because you haven't laid down your goals, you don't have a vision, and you are not doing your planning work. your planning work well. We do not know the timetable. Sometimes, you allocate an additional twenty million for health services for the elderly. Sometimes, you allocate some extra resources for a certain service. I think this is not the right approach. We get the impression that you have no particular targets in mind. You just make empty promises. So can you now respond to my question and the questions raised by Mr. Fernando Cheung? Yes, Chairman, because I understand that members are concerned. So the member says that we don't have planning, we don't have a vision. I want to say that with regard to services for the elderly, we have a very clear policy. We want elderly persons to age in place, and institutionalized care is the last resort. So we have to try to improve the services and the support services given to elderly persons who age in place. And also, we have to step up the provision of RCHE places. I think Chairman, I will provide more information later, because I understand that time's up. Su Tem Yu Cheong?
Yes, thank you. With regard to services for the elderly, the administration may feel that a five-year plan mechanism, for example, lacks flexibility and cannot respond to welfare needs in a timely manner. Now, I do not quite agree. If the administration has given an undertaking, then all the policies and policy bureaus and departments concerned will try to work towards that goal. For example, identifying suitable sites in training up the necessary people. And I think we need to let those waiting for the service know clearly for how long they have to wait. So it's important that there is planning. Planning can help us solve our problems. And I don't think planning means a lack of flexibility. We understand that there is an aging population. We need to know how many people are queuing up. We want to know the extent of the demand. In fact, it's just inevitable that people will keep aging. They will never become young again. And so although you may want to encourage them to age in place, ultimately, they will need an institutionalized care. So all these can be predicted. And then the secretary is telling us that elderly persons have their own preferences, and as a result, they have to wait for a long time before they can get an RCHE place. Now, I hope that you can give us more information to substantiate your point. Now, for example, for those on the waiting list, how many offers have we made to them? And we want to know the reasons for their having rejected those offers. I think you need to give us all the information in order to convince us to come around to your point of view. It's like the case for people waiting for public housing. People, those on the waiting list do have their district preferences. But then the Housing Department's policy is to give them three offers, and if they reject all the three offers, they will have to queue up all over again. So I'm sure if there is this policy, then elderly persons know that they shouldn't be too choosy, so to speak. And I believe family members would welcome a place in a rented home, or if this is not available, a place in a bought-place home. We now get the impression that the administration's attitude is that if we have more resources, we'll try to do more. If we don't have the resources, sorry. That's all we can do. We don't get the impression that the SL government is committed and determined to solve the problem. We really do not get the impression that the SL government is doing its best and has tried its best. Chairman, thank you. I want to tell Mr. Tem that we do carry out planning, though it's not a five-year planning mechanism. We do have planning. It's just that this planning mechanism is flexible. So we do have planning. It's just that we don't have that planning mechanism that members have in mind. In nineteen ninety-nine, we said that we would discontinue the five-year plan mechanism. And Mr. Tem, we're not trying to put the blame on elderly persons. We're not trying to say that as you are too choosy, you can't, you have to wait, you can't get a place too soon. But I want to say that ninety percent of the applicants for RCHEs do have district preferences. In fact, we've already given members this figure in reply to an oral question. And then when we make offers, thirty-one percent of the elderly persons reject the offers. I want to say that, in fact, elderly persons do not want to move into an RCH unless there are really no other alternatives. Mr. Chan Kwok Shu?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Now, I will not accuse you of not having any planning. Even if I say you have no planning, you will defend yourself. You'll say that there is planning. All right? But I think the government prefers flexible planning. In other words, the government has to say. Others do not have any say. When the government wants to do something, it will do it. The government doesn't want to put it down in black and white what it will do, what services it is going to provide. And if you haven't put forward goals and indicators, how can members of the public and Legco monitor your work? You're saying that, yes, we'll do something. Yes, we'll try to do something. So when there is a shortage of supply with regard to RCH places, you tell us that that's because of the lack of sites? You say that there aren't enough resources. You'll put up, or you give us lots of reasons or excuses. In fact, we are of the view that a five-year plan mechanism is preferable because we can really monitor the progress that the administration has made. But you are of the view that the mechanism lacks flexibility. In fact, it's a fact that the population is aging. It's a fact that the number of elderly persons will be ever-increasing. And you can't just start doing something two or three years in advance because you will need to identify suitable sites, you'll need to make available the financial resources. So I want to see your direction and your plans for the next five to ten years. So I'm not telling you that you have to resign or step down if you can't achieve the goals. But you have to tell us why you can't achieve those goals. You may say there isn't enough money. You may say there aren't enough people. And then we will look at whether that's the case. And it seems that you like to only tell us what will be done in the coming year. So it seems that for the various committees, commissions, advisory committees, you're planning on a one-year basis. In other words, one year later, if you have the money, you'll continue with the service, you'll expand the service. If you don't have the money, you don't do anything. But this is not what we want to see. We need long-term planning for rehabilitation service and service for the elderly. But we can't see any long-term planning on your part. In fact, there are other areas which also require planning. Family service, youth service. But I am only talking about two types of services today. Rehabilitation service and elderly service. For these two areas, I think we want to see five-year plans or ten-year plans. Yes, secretary? Chairman, I think our priorities are the same as those outlined by Mr. Cheung. Elderly service and rehabilitation service. But the paper doesn't put forward a five-year plan or a ten-year plan. This is just stock-taking. You're just telling us what you have done. And I think this is most unsatisfactory. Chairman? In the past few months, we adopted, started adopting a new approach. We tried to identify suitable sites. We started with the hardware. And as I have told members just now, we've got short-term, medium-term, and long-term measures, and we are stepping up our partnership with NGOs. Chairman, allow me to continue because this is important. The HKCSS, I think, is the platform. Now, we all, we've established this platform. Together with the HKCSS, we are trying to encourage NGOs in Hong Kong to release sites in their hands for expansion and redevelopment.
So we can provide the facilities. This is the most important point. Or else there is no way to start planning. You say you want five thousand places, but where do we have the land? We have to stock-take the space we have and then the manpower complement. And then we can do planning with a certain direction. Give us some time. We are doing it. As I said, manpower is also important. We have got a hundred and sixty million from the budget, and in the next five years, we'll be able to train up one thousand two hundred and forty enrolled nurses. So at least in terms of nurses, there will be a thousand more. And PTs and OTs, the UGC will increase a hundred and forty places in the next triennium. And there will be forty more undergraduate nursing training places. So we are pushing forward. Give us some time. As the deputy chairman was asking, we'll certainly land on a blueprint. Let us not talk about a strategy. That may be too grand-sounding. But this is our pledge. This is our commitment. Certainly, we will go down that direction. Next, Leng Kwak Hong? Chairman, what is the way you are doing your work? Dr. Nelson Chow said two days ago that the elderly problem can be addressed in two ways. And he said three thousand is too little. There should be four thousand dollars that the administration should underwrite it, and a hundred and fifty million dollars should be put aside. Well, I like it so much. But then Dr. Chow also said there is no consensus. Come on. Four months ago, you said this. Aren't you ashamed of yourself today? You appoint the head of the COP, and she says, or he says, he has the idea, but there is no consensus. Shouldn't the administration be the one to forge a consensus? It's not for me to forge a consensus. Why don't you put forward Dr. Chow's proposal for consultation and do it within three to six months? Dr. Chow has already done his sums. He says it's easy. But you said before you couldn't do your sums. And now Dr. Chow has done it, but then he says there is no consensus. You said that the OALA will save the elderly in Hong Kong. But people are already crying now that they have to fill out so many pages of forms. You must also resolve that. Come on, deliver what you have promised. Is C Y Leng doing his job? What about his think-tank? His think-tank said in one voice that this could be done, but there is no consensus. Shouldn't the administration be part of this consensus? C Y Leng said whether he would be elected as the CE, he would represent Hong Kong people. So when are you doing the consultation? When are you actually doing something? Or else I would certainly embark on filibustering. I would seek to reduce the salaries of your entire bureau and the SWD. Just wait for it. Okay, let me come back to this. You must apologize. I give you fifteen seconds to apologize. You say ninety-eight percent of elderly people have district preference, and thirty-one percent have to wait after making that preference. Are you saying that it is the fault of the elderly if they are not given a place before their death? Is that what you are saying? Don't hide. Don't seek to give us bureaucraties. Yes or no? Are you telling society that these people have only themselves to blame if they cannot get the service? This is because they are too choosy, so they should die? What are you talking about? You are not doing your job, and yet you insult people. Do you know what is actually happening? Chairman? Chairman? I give him fifteen seconds to apologize. Is he going to apologize? Secretary? Michael Soon was criticized by me. Oh, no, it was you. Michael Soon was responsible for education. I asked him where his children were studying, and it happened once, now it's happening twice. You did not do your job. But Chairman, I must clarify. We give you the figures just to show that we respect the wishes of the elderly. If you respect them, then give them the services. We are working to increase places. You say you have a hundred and sixty million dollars to train nurses. We told you to do that long time ago. We said Sichong should already build a nursing school. Why are you saying elderly people should be blamed now, that they should be responsible for making choices? Do you think I don't know the policies? I have told you about increasing places to train PTs as well. This is outrageous. Are you also trying to say that young people and families have used up your resources? You must assign priorities to your work. Why don't you stipulate and put a condition on the URA that thirty percent of their work should be to build RCHEs? Are you going to do it? Have you told C Y Leng that when Berry Germ resumes land at the URA, thirty percent of the land should be devoted for building RCHEs instead of just building luxury homes? I have put up with you for too long. You give it to Hong Kong Housing Society, so you build home for the rich. Okay, secretary, after the first round of questions, I will give you time to respond to things you like to respond to. Pun Shiu Ping?
Thank you, Chairman. There are over twenty thousand elderly people waiting for a place, and they may have to wait ten years. The secretary said land and manpower are both important. Let me ask you a few questions. First, the secretary said that he encourages NGOs to come up with the land. But shouldn't the administration have some specific planning and arrangements in place so that you can let us know what progress you have achieved? And secondly, on human resources. Last Friday, the CS was here in Legco. He talked about the SCPP, Steering Committee on Population Policy, and he said that construction and retail, as well as nursing and caring, all these lack manpower. And she said that that could be the consideration And she said that that could be the consideration of import of labor for 15 trades. And you said that you would be moving ahead with training. Now, of course, trade unions have a lot of reservations about the import of labor, but I'm afraid that even with the SCPP, you are not working in harmony. What is the long-term manpower planning for elderly services? What are your actual policies? And number three, members have asked about progress of retirement protection. Dr. Chow is undergoing some research. It will be completed within a year. There may be different options for choices of the community. Does the administration have rather accurate and specific planning, including a timetable, for example, the picking of the option and implementation? In fact, all these have to do with a long-term welfare planning. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Pun. First question, the RCHE places. We are asking NGOs to do it through the platform of Hong Kong CSS. That is an important decision. Just now, you criticized us for lacking a vision and commitment. But last week, I went to Wong Tai-sin, a Shin Kong Hui nursing home. In fact, it can expand 100%. Now, there are 240 places. It can actually expand to have 500 places. And there are also daycare and training facilities that are possible. This is what we mean by looking forward. We have to work on both hardware and software in order to take care of the aging of the population. We have to make use of this platform to stocktake, to see how much land can be released, and what NGOs have the wishes and whether they have the land to do it. Then we can factor that in into our long-term planning, so we can start to do some assessment and so that we can take another step forward in providing elderly services. And also, training for carers of the elderly and also the QF, whether this will go against the SCPP. Actually, there is no contradiction. SCPP is one of the members in this, and I would have to follow up on the release of the workforce. There is aging of the population, and in 2018, the population will start to decline. So we need to release the manpower in our workforce. So first of all, we'll provide the training, so as to give the opportunity to locals. But then certainly, we might need some temporary transitional import of labor. I know the labor sector is very concerned about the importation of labor, but you know that under the LAB, we have the supplementary labor scheme, which is well-established. And most of the workers imported into Hong Kong have worked in the elderly service sector, and there are thousands such carers already in the trade. And number three, Dr. Chow said something on radio a few days ago, and he was expressing his own view. It is not the government's stance. Because at this stage, we have started an objective, pragmatic, and unbiased research to see whether the three existing pillars would provide enough retirement protection in the long term. And also, there are many views from the community, the joint alliance, and also academics, and also members. We will analyze all the data, so the committee will be able to try to forge a consensus after analysis. So if you ask for a consensus now, I think it's premature. We have to be pragmatic. We have to do the analysis first to see what should be the next step.
Mr. Ronnie Tong. Last Friday, when the CS was here, I had wanted to ask her the question. I pressed the button, but I did not get my turn. Retirement protection has been dragging on for a long time. And frankly, I don't really understand why you are embarking on another research group to do more research. There has been research after research and after research. So when are you going to stop? There are a few facts that you cannot deny first. That the CE's have all said that aging of the population is a serious problem. C Y Leng, in his latest policy address, said the same thing. He was asking, what should we do after 20 years? That's an urgent issue, and there is no doubt about this. Secondly, second fact. Universal retirement protection has been discussed for a long time, and options have been put forward by the community. The administration confirmed to Legco that the CPU had taken a look at universal retirement protection. I'm talking about the community proposal. So why is it that you are still engaging Dr. Nelson Chow for heading a group to do more research? What is the scope of work of this working group? You have not told us the exact scope of work. Is it that you are doing fresh research into topics that have not been researched into before? Or is he going to review the community proposal to see whether it is feasible? If not, is he going to come up with a replacement proposal? If you say after a year, when the report is out, we would know that the community proposal would be implemented, or after that year, the administration would come up with another option? Or is it that the administration will come and say, I'm going to do nothing, and so you will just sit there and die? Well, at least I know what result to expect. Chairman, there has been repeated procrastination. Dr. Chow may come up with a report next year, and the administration can appoint another research group, and then there could be another consultative committee, and then there can be another task force to give views. How many decades are there in one's life?
And, now, in fact, I had wanted to ask the CS for a this question. But then, so today, I'm putting this question to you, though this may be a bit unfair to you. That is, will the administration make a decision after the report is available? I'm worried that the setting up of this working group is just a delaying tactic. And so, for universal suffrage, for retirement protection, it seems that the administration just want to drag its feet. I think, I think getting Professor Nelson Chow to carry out the study represents a breakthrough. I can't see why this is a breakthrough. And I want to say that many suggestions were put forward by society, but the CPU did not really study them in detail. And the CPU mainly concentrated on the three pillars. At that time, we felt that the other options were too controversial, and there was really no room for the implementation of those suggestions. And now, we feel that we should get a highly respectable professor to do the analysis for us. If the government or if the administration is to do the analysis itself, we may not be objective enough. Professor Chow has spent 30 years studying and researching into retirement protection, and no one is more authoritative than he is. Now, I think we need, we need universal retirement protection. There is no dispute about that. But then, we're told that the calculations put forward by NGOs may not be accurate. So it's really about doing or getting the calculations right. So, Secretary, can you promise that a decision will be made by the administration in a year's time? I can tell, I can tell members that after the administration has received Professor Chow's report, it will make, it will make a decision. It will come up with a policy. Mr. Chen Chi-chun. I think every time we attend a meeting of WS Panel, we have a heavy heart. When we meet disabled groups, when we meet service providers for the elderly, we all have a heavy heart. And I believe the more experienced members know what I'm talking about. And all of us sitting here feel rather helpless. We are unable to do anything, nor can the secretary. I think it's a waste of time talking about medium and long-term social welfare planning. I think this time, it's the administration filibustering. So let's talk about the OALA. They will be eligible if their savings are no longer at the level of 190,000. Also, we are telling the bureau that these services are not enough. I'm sure they know, or they fully understand that there's a shortage of these services. We're saying that elderly persons keep waiting for a place in the RCH, and then they die without getting a place. And then we are told that if elderly persons have no preferences with regard to districts, then they can get a place between one to, within one to three months' time. I don't know whether there are elderly persons watching the live broadcast of this meeting. So what if all the elderly persons change their mind and tell the administration that they have no preferences at all? 2011, CNA Homes and Nursing Homes, those 5,000 elderly persons died and were not able to get a place before they died. So, Secretary, among the 5,000, how many of them were too choosy? And as a result, they weren't given a place? And the secretary said that in fact, about 30% or 31% rejected all the offers, despite the fact that all their requests were met. And for these elderly persons, they really can't blame the government, right? So you can see that the bureau doesn't do a planning, nor does the C Y Leng administration. So when one policy becomes mature, the administration launches that policy. So if people complain loud, complain more loudly, then the government gives more priority to that particular issue. So what can Legco members do? Filibustering is one of the options. Mr. Yip Yip Yuen was told by Long-Hair that if he really wants 15-year free education, he should also really filibuster. So it's that we should really occupy central to urge the administration to do more in respect of welfare planning and welfare policies? Yes, Chairman, let me respond. I said that over 90% of the elderly persons waiting for RCH had different preferences, and about 30% rejected the offers. They didn't want to go to an RCH. These are figures provided by the SWD. But we can't say that we just give the elderly persons an offer and then tell them to take it or leave it. We also want to adopt a sympathetic approach. We also want to offer them places as early as possible. Now, for the OALA, in fact, in April, the first batch of elderly persons will get the payment, and over 400,000 elderly persons will benefit. And I want to say that we will be providing 2,300 additional places, RCH places. We've already got a funding, so we will be able to provide this number of places. Once we've got the funding, once we've got the recurring expenditure available, we will be able to provide the additional places. And then for RCHDs, Suleam Hospital will be redeveloped. And at Castle Peak Road, 1,150 places will be available. These are actual places. Mr. Chen, I hope that you understand that we are committed. We have the determination, but please do give us some time to do our work. All right, I think we've already completed the first round, and so I will now ask some questions. Now, there are 29 organizations under the HKCSS saying that concerning manpower, training, and the provision of hardware, C Y Leng said in his election manifesto that there would be medium and long-term planning. There would be targets and goals laid down. As members have pointed out, and I also get this impression, and that is, the bureau understands what the problems are. But the bureau is willing to carry out short-term planning only, not medium-term and long-term planning. You are saying that for medium and long-term planning, these are not flexible enough. But, Secretary, you are an experienced A O. How are you going to really deal with the technical and the management aspects? HKCSS has proposed that there should be a rolling review. In other words, adjustments and reviews on an ongoing basis. That will help tackle the problem of lack of flexibility. So you may have your difficulties, but what do you have to say with regard to the CE's election manifesto? And I want to confirm two points with you. When, in reply to Mr. Chen Kwok-chu's question, you said that you would want to come up with planning for the next five to 10 years, and you asked us to allow you some time to do the job. So is that really the case? And then, Mr. Ronnie Tong talked about universal retirement, universal retirement protection. And for yesterday, we read in the newspapers society's views and discussion on university retirement protection. But of course, the F T U's package was not included. Anyway, Secretary, you said that there would be a decision made in a year's time after Professor Chow's report is available. You know, the other day, I asked Mrs. Carrie Lam whether she was determined to do something in respect of universal retirement protection. I'm willing to wait for a year if a decision will be made in a year's time. We'll wait for Professor Chow's report. So, Secretary, can you confirm these two points that you have made? Yes, Chairman, concerning medium and long-term planning, I don't think we should really mention a figure, whether it should be five years or 10 years. I think it's meaningless to talk about a five-year plan or a 10-year plan. We're talking about medium and long-term planning. Mr. Chen Kwok-chu said that our top priorities should be elderly service and rehabilitation service. We also regard these as our top priorities, and that's why we've set up our partnership with NGOs. We've established this platform together with the HKCSS. And if they have the premises, if they have sites, say in Kuntong, in Wong Tai-sin, you know, I mentioned that institution in Wong Tai-sin. It's a Shin Kong Hui institution, and I understand that they do have a site to offer. And then we are going to train enrolled nurses and other paramedical personnel. And our vision is to be able to come up with a visionary blueprint. So do give us some time to do the work. And I have mentioned Suleam Hospital a few times.
And I have, uh, mentioned at, uh, Suleam Hospital a few times. In twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, or twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, uh, that we'll see the, um, largest rehabilitation complex in Hong Kong offering one thousand one hundred and fifty places. Um, so, uh, this, this is a committed project, but of course, we need to have the architects trying to come up with the best layout for us. So Chairman, we hope to come up with a blueprint. We hope to, um, tell members about our vision, but do give us time to do the medium and long-term planning. And then universal retirement protection. After Professor, Professor Nelson Chow's completed this work, he will, um, submit a report to the Commission on Poverty. And then, um, we'll try to forge consensus as to the way forward. So we will not, um, um, say that we will need further studies and more studies. Professor Chow's study will be the final study. Um, previously, we didn't really, um, study in depth the alliance's, um, um, recommendations. Now we have this, um, uh, independent academic, uh, doing the analysis for us. Uh, if, if this is not a breakthrough, then what is it?
Uh, um, anyone else for the first round? We, we will have a second round. So I will now give the secretary some time to, um, uh, respond to the, um, comments, uh, made by Long-Hear. I understand that you wanted to give a reply, but you didn't have the time.
In fact, I have already clarified the issue. I don't want you to have the misunderstanding that we are blaming it on the elderly people. Definitely not, but we have to respect the wishes of the elderly. Ms. Chan Yin Han, you understand the Wong Tai Sin situation very well. The relatives of the elderly people may all live in Wong Tai Sin, but if you assign a board place or subsidized place in Ta Kuling, of course, they won't like it. That is why we like to expand the existing N G Os. And frankly speaking, there would not be so much opposition because you already have an R C H E. If you want to build a new R C H E, we also have to take care of the objection in the districts. It is not easy to ask the districts to accommodate, uh, these rehabilitation fa- facilities. In Wafu Estate, um, we would be building a new integrated center for mentally rehabilitated persons. And I'm so happy that in Wafu Estate, we can have that kind of, um, magnanimity. But all this takes time. We have the same mindset. We want to work for the elderly people and the disadvantaged groups. I'd like to actually respond to Dr. Fernando Cheung. It is not that we only work on areas where there is more pressure put on us, uh, where people have a bigger outcry. No, if you look at our paper, this paper is rather detailed because last time, uh, deputations mentioned many aspects, including childcare and day childcare and after-school childcare, et cetera. In fact, we have done so much more in these few years. However, I do agree that there is still a lot of room for improvement, especially in the so-called disaster areas. Uh, these are rehabilitation and elderly services. Indeed, we have to do a lot more in many respects. We, we do accept your criticism and your comments. Thank you. Second round. Dr. Fernando Cheung.
Thank you, Chairman. I hope you can really implement universal retirement protection. But let us talk about the short term. There is more you can do. With regard to elderly people applying for C S S A, if they can apply as an individual, that is important. It's unfortunate that in your paper, you just again repeat existing policies. And you say you will give, um, consideration to special circumstances for individuals. I'd like to ask you, in the past five years, how many such cases were there that the D S W exercised discretion in granting C S S A to elderly people? Secondly, in the election manifesto of C Y L A, he talked about caring for the elderly. And he said in that kind of terms that he would consider combining O A A and the elderly subsidy. And also whether there will be an impact on family policies and public policies. This is what he said in his election manifesto. Before we have universal retirement protection, what have you done in this respect? Have you done anything? And what is your plan? Is there a timetable? Any review findings? And also specifically, in the last term of government, Donald Zhang promised that that would be a long-term plan. But then there was delay. And then the SWAG was told to write a paper and with two rounds of consultation. And then it was said that the paper would go back to the, um, S L W. It was again Matthew Cheung, of course. And then it came to nothing. And I'd like to ask about that so-called long-term plan. Of course, we are hugely unhappy about it already. But what is the status of that paper? Is it that, uh, it no longer exists? Or is it that a lot of your services are based on that paper? That that paper is still your formal, long-term planning policy paper? Please come clean on that.
Secretary, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for those two questions. Number one, whether elderly people can apply for C S S A as an individual? We explained, uh, the details, uh, in the past, and the D S W can give you the figures. Uh, there is a, a difficulty here. Last week, uh, I was at Hong Kong C S S and we were meeting organizations and grassroots. We knew that this is a big, uh, barrier for elderly people. We know that. But then there is a policy consideration. You also know that C S S A is funded by tax money. There is no contribution from anybody. Now, if we can identify the people who need it, we can certainly help them. This is not a platitude, but because it is important. The positioning is about resource allocation. There must be a policy. If there is not such a policy, if elderly individuals will come to apply, of course, it's easier for them and they can be helped. But then, some elderly people can also be supported by the families. And, uh, after that, the families will not have to give the support and all the financial commitment will have to be shouldered by the administration. Now, can we shoulder it in the long term? But then, of course, if, uh, there are children who are not willing to or who are not cooperative in signing the declaration that they will not support the elderly person, the D S W can exercise discretion. D S W, as the secretary explained, it is a safety net. And if elderly people have the financial need, um, and families have the financial need, we'll provide the support. And it is regarded as a family. The unit must be the family. And we would like the entire family to fill out a form to declare the financial status. But if elderly persons have the difficulty because their children are not willing to sign the declaration, then we can exercise discretion to ask elderly people themselves to make the declaration. And also, in certain cases, if the elderly person stays with the family, but, uh, there is a problem with the relationship amongst family members. And if people operate quite independently financially, then we will make suitable arrangements. And the elderly person will be allowed to apply for C S S A independently. And I can supply the relevant figures after the meeting. Uh, she, he, he did not answer my question. Uh, there will be a third round. Tan Kapiu.
I'd like to give more time to the administration to respond to my three previous questions. They have not responded to two of them. First, Dr. Chow's research into universal retirement package. You said that he would take a year. But at the same time, the C S said that it is just a feasibility or even an academic study. It is not, uh, something for consultation with the society. So when are you going to do the consultation? It's after a year or now as Dr. Chow is doing his research? Or do you have to look at the data and findings before you decide on whether there will be consultation? Secondly, the poverty line. You said that within twenty thirteen, there will be the drawing up of the poverty line. When we discuss the poverty line on different occasions, there have been two ways of putting it. First, that you only go for the absolute income. Or secondly, you go for relative income that is at fifty or sixty percent of the median income. And number three, some people have proposed this, but the administration has not responded to it. And that is the basic expenditure for a grassroots family. In other words, you go for a basket of factors. Uh, in other words, if, uh, the basic living would require a certain amount, but then the income cannot cover it, then they should be within the poverty line. So are you going to include these three factors? And how are you going to react to the drawing up of the poverty line? In that, what are your policy directions for helping people below it?
First, I'd like to clarify something. It is a poverty line. It is not a poverty alleviation line. As the C S has explained a few times, it is not that anyone who is below the poverty line would automatically have to be helped because the poverty line only looks at income. We do not look at assets. In some circumstances, some people may have property, but they have a low income. So they are subsumed under the poverty line, especially the elderly people. They have property, but they do not work, so they do not have income. And so they are included in the poverty line. They cannot apply for C S S A. Therefore, when they apply for C S S A, we'll also have to look at assets. So it acts as a screening process. But at least the poverty line will show us what are the groups that need our help so we can do focused work to help them. Say they do not live in public housing. If they are inadequately housed in partitioned rooms, in subdivided flats, and in old tenement buildings, we will focus our help, uh, to help them. So the purpose of the poverty line is to identify these groups. So when we make policies, we will make effective policies to help them. Secondly, what will be the conclusions after the drawing up of the poverty line? The C O P will have its second meeting on Thursday, and we will explore into it further. We will adopt the concept of relative poverty. The details, uh, will be available after the plenary of the C O P on Thursday. Secondly, you asked about low-income supplement. The P A this year has said clearly that we have heard voices from members, including F T U members and also the community. The F T U has asked for a low-income subsidy every time. We have an open mind. There are also views that on the basis of the W I T S S, uh, we can have a family income supplement. We have an open mind about all these views. Please give us some time. Because, as you know, we have already relaxed the W I T T S S. Now it is dual-track. And I believe come July, uh, a few, um, tens of thousands of people would also become eligible. We'll have to take stock of the situation. And in July, we will have clearer figures. I'm sure people will come forward to apply for the three thousand six hundred dollars for the six, first six months for them. So in other words, within the year, will there be a decision on low-income supplement? I cannot really promise a timetable or roadmap to you. But, uh, I can tell you that there is commitment. Just now you said that we have the mentality, not the stamina. But we have the stamina. We will increase it further. Now, why I said poverty alleviation line, not poverty line? Because in the districts, we have heard a lot of grievances from non-C S S A families. I agree. Those who are outside the C S S A safety net are not exactly helped by us. I agree. That is why I hope to draw up, uh, focused policies to help them. Next, Alice Mack, first round. Secretary. Many members mentioned retirement protection. I'd like to say that, um, in your review, you should also look at this. Policy-wise, you are self-contradictory. Say, for example, the administration pro- encourages aging in place. But as Dr. Fernando Cheung said, why is it that if an elderly person lives with his family, then he will not be eligible for C S S A? Recently, in Tin Shui Wei, I came across this very tragic case. A ninety-nine-year-old woman, she fell. She could not take care of herself. And the family was very good. They took her back. However, your staff told her that, uh, she would not be able to get C S S A anymore. She had already applied for it. Uh, maybe your colleague was not happy as, uh, an S W D colleague. So he told her son that either you send the old lady into a home or you apply for C S S A as a family unit. In this case, the son was very pious towards his mother. But if you say the family relationship is not harmonious, now given a person at ninety-nine years of age, how can he apply for exemption, et cetera? He will have to stick with a family that, that does not welcome him. Or he will be sent into a home for the elderly. So you have contradictory policies. You say people should age in place, but then there is no policies to support it. We use public money, and public money should not be kept in the pocket. It should be used in the proper way to help people. You should not just keep the money in your pocket. You're not helping people who need your help and your policies are contradictory.
And then, um, after-school care or occasional childcare service. Why is it that, um, you're providing such a small amount of subsidy for the, um, community, um, nannies? You keep on, uh, talking about a family-friendly policy. You say, saying that you want the women to be able to come out to work. But then for the community nannies, I think you are discriminating against them. You seem to suggest that, um, uh, childminding or cha- uh, childminding is in fact an easy job. And so, um, um, they should only be given a, um, small, only a small amount of subsidy or allowance for their service. And if you go to Tong Chong or Tin Shui Wei, you see that in fact the women do want to come out to work, but then they need to have someone to take care of, um, their children. Um, I'll say, uh, for your childcare service, the center may open at eight. But then, uh, the, um, if she wants to be, um, a cleaning worker, she has to start work at half past seven. And as a result, she, uh, uh, cannot, um, come out to work and has to apply for C S S A. Um, secretary, you said that you had the stamina. I hope that you really have the stamina to resolve the, um, conflicts among the various, um, welfare policies. Now, every time we, um, um, meet the residents, um, they, um, have a lot of grievances.
Yes, I understand that, um, there may be conflicts, um, uh, uh, among, um, various policies. In fact, I also, um, um, visited districts and meet the residents. And, uh, I think the director can really try to, um, look at those, uh, policies. And then concerning whether the elderly, um, person can apply, um, for C S S A as an individual. I want to say that, um, this is just, just one aspect of the entire C S S A system. And it may not be easy for us to just, um, change one aspect of the system. So, um, Professor Chow, um, is now looking at the three pillars and all the, or also suggestions from other, um, 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 organizations. So, um, he will be, um, looking at the, um, proposals from political parties, the alliance, F T U, and so, uh, and in fact, uh, once we've got the, um, uh, the, the report from the professor, then we can, um, start our deliberations. And I also agree that we should do more with regard to childcare. Some ask, some are asking us why we're not, um, um, providing community nannies with, um, the minimum wage rate. I want to say that, um, we, um, these, um, nannies, um, are, are not, um, volunteers providing a, a free service. Um, they, they get an allowance. And in fact, it's just to, um, the, um, try to... And in fact, it's just to try to set up a neighborhood care scheme. In fact, the rate at the moment is fifteen to twenty-two dollars per hour. So if Mrs. Jung needs to take care of a child, she can also take care of the child of Mrs. Jung, so that Mrs. Jung can go out to work. And in fact, community nannies operate from or work from seven to eleven. In fact, there is room for developing this scheme. I understand that there is room for improvement, and we are now looking at ways to enhance this project. So as to meet the needs of women who have to start work at seven or seven thirty, she can place her child with a community nanny living in the next block, for example. Mr. Chan Kwok-Chu. I want to state my position as a social worker. We should look at future planning. We should look at our future population. We need to assess the adequacy or otherwise of present services. And we also have to see whether the present level of service can still meet future needs and demands. This is what we mean by planning. The secretary talks about planning. So he's talking about identifying sites, training more people, and then trying to secure more resources. So we do have a different understanding about planning. You feel that you are helping the social welfare sector. But the social welfare sector doesn't think that they are getting enough help from you. There is really a spread down of communication. I understand that ultimately you have to try to train more people. You have to try to secure more resources for the services. Now, you may think that if the problems surface, then you will have to try to get more and more and more money to try to satisfy the needs. But if there is such a need, why can't you try to secure more funding to meet the need? Now, for example, the daycare centers for the elderly, two thousand six hundred and nine places, and then integrated community care and enhanced home care, six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. So when you add the two together, that's less than ten thousand. But we have one million elderly persons in our community. So you'll say, I do have this service available. And if you think that the service is not adequate, I can provide a hundred additional places next year and five hundred additional places in the year after next. Do you know that thirty years later, we will have three point two five million elderly persons? And you may only be able to provide fifty thousand places at that time. It's simply not enough. I think you should, first of all, ascertain the need, and then you try to provide adequate service to meet the need. That's what I mean by planning. You said that you would do planning for rehabilitation service and elderly service. So what exactly are you going to do? Will you make your decisions after consulting your colleagues? Or will you have a dialogue with the social welfare sector before you come up with a planning strategy? So after you've done the planning, you can make the first step, and you may not be able to achieve your target in the first year or in the second year, but at least you need to make a start. Yes, secretary. Chairman, I think, in fact, we do share the same goals and objectives. It's just that the means to achieve the goals may be different. We will not just work behind closed doors. We have a lot of interaction with the H K C S S, as you know. All N G Os are members of the H K C S S. In fact, we have a highly transparent policy. N G Os fully understand the demand for software. They know which services are badly needed. They know where we should provide more manpower resources. And we have an elderly commission. We also have the R A C. There is no need for us to set up another commission. These organizations comprise academics, NGO representatives, district councillors, as well as representatives from the business sector. So we can rely on the advice of the two committees. We will also, of course, attach importance to legal members' views. We will provide a blueprint for elderly persons and disabled persons, and we will come up with a vision. Mr. Lam Kwah Hong. You have East Kowloon, West Kowloon, Northeast N T. These are the projects that the government will embark on. These projects have been publicized. So have you earmarked enough sites? Have you earmarked enough sites for social welfare services? When you talk about high-tech, you keep talking about a cruise terminal. And then the only project that you can speak proudly of is the Thailand Hospital. And then concerning East Kowloon, you know, there are lots of public housing estates, lots of public housing units. And how many sites have you earmarked for social welfare service? And then how many sites will there be in West Kowloon and in Northeast N T? You haven't reserved any sites, that's my view. Or else why do you have to choose Siulam? It's just a remote place. No, I don't have a car. And if I have to go to Siulam to visit my family members, that would really be a long way for me to travel. And then community nannies. I think having, of course, having then the scheme is better than having none at all. Because you think the community nannies are just lending a helping hand, and that's why they are not paid the minimum wage. So how can you say that you are a people-based government? Now, in fact, you've made a mistake. What you've done is wrong, but you try to defend yourselves. You're not willing to rectify your mistakes. You do childminding for an hour. Ask the high-ranking female officials. Ask Carrie Lam to do childminding work. Ask her to carry the baby. So you do not respect these women and the service that they are providing. No wonder why you have domestic helpers at home to help you. Ms. Mack is kind. She has made kind remarks. And then you have finally admitted that you haven't really taken suggestions from N G Os on universal retirement protection seriously. All right. So Professor Chow will be doing something. He will be doing a study. You take from action. The government does not, in every case, spend a lot of time on consultation. For example, with regard to the baby formula, the decision on the baby formula products. The government was so resolute. F T U has been talking about universal retirement protection for over a decade. Professor Mok-Tai K has retired or will be retired. And Professor Chow has said very clearly that he has got a set of calculations and figures. So you make a decision. Please do not keep saying that there is no consensus. Now, in fact, the government can do almost anything, so long as it has to resolve. And of course, I understand that you cannot bring someone who has started back to life. But apart from that, I think you can do almost everything. You, and for the O A L A, you insist that there must be means testing. And if you insist on means testing, how can Professor Chow's recommendations be adopted? And if you say the government doesn't have enough money, then you impose a tax on shared dividends. And Li Ka Shing alone will have to pay three billion dollars. Do you know that if you impose this tax, if you impose this tax, the amount you receive from Li Ka Shing will be able to help thousands of elderly persons? I think we must help the elderly persons before they die. You've made all the mistakes, and you are asking us to bear all the consequences and to suffer because of your wrong decisions. Now, tell me how many sites, how many places you've reserved in West Kowloon, in East Kowloon, and in Northeast N T? Tell us the truth. Don't deceive us. All right, I think we can now proceed to the third round. But before that, I will use my time in the second round. Yes, I want to follow up on behalf of this panel.
Just now, the secretary said he asked for time to work on P W Ds and elderly services. I think that is okay. I hope the secretary, you can let us have the details in three months' time. Because the aging of the population is already an existing problem, and the P W Ds will also have more difficulties. So within three months, I hope you can give me the details. But I'd like to tack something more to it. And that is what Ken Capewell asked. I think the problem of the working poor is also a big one. It is now subsumed under the C O P, but I think it cannot handle it. The Legco has a subcommittee on poverty. Yesterday, we had quite a heated meeting. What I'd like to say is, how are you helping the working poor? I agree. What a deputation said on the nineteenth of February. He said he wouldn't like to have any handouts, but he would like to have a chance for self-reliance. In the eighties and nineties in the U S A, they were talking about work welfare. You mentioned W I T S S to Ms. Alice Mack. I think that would form some kind of subsidy in the future. In other words, you would take measures to help people reintegrate into society. I think that other people might not know this very well, but you, Mr. Jung, should know it very well. You came from the S W D, and now you are heading this bureau. You should understand the poor very well. However, you are not helping the problem. You say V T C and E R B are helping the poor and the young. But even if you give them training after training, they cannot learn a job. If you want to give a job to them, it means you, first of all, have to find the land. What you said in paragraph two or page two will certainly work. You are talking about doing planning together with other departments, including education, et cetera. And Mr. Tim Yu-Jung was saying, since there is no planning, there are many interdepartmental barriers. However, as a government, you have to make wholesome decisions. And you really have to tackle people who have a low income. They are working, yet they are on C S S A. According to the Hong Kong C S S, there are one point two million poor people in Hong Kong. What are you going to do for them? Learn from the mainland or Singapore? They target people who no longer have a job. They have focused policies to help them reintegrate into the workforce. They do not dish out welfare, but they help people to get work. Maybe you can help them with the rental and land issues, so they can operate a small business. So I would add a point to this. As the secretary, you understand very well the problem of the working poor. So you should not just give them arms, but you should help them to continue to work. When my father was here, there was no S W D. But the government asked me whether my mother would like to have a license. And my mother did not have the application fee of a few dollars. However, the government told us that if we had a license, we could operate a stall to sell dessert or even newspaper in a street corner. And then, remember, people who used to work in factories could become hawkers when the factory is closed down. But now there are no longer such policies, and people could only remain poor. So what the deputation said on the nineteenth of February is right. Since you understand the situation so well, Mr. Jung, why can't you do more for the working poor? I have said the same thing for over a decade. So apart from the elderly and retirement protection, and also aging in place for them, and secondly, P W Ds, and number three, I'd like to work, let you to work on this as well, working poor. Within three months, you should come back and give us some progress. I expect you to work together with the welfare sector. I don't want to say whether the SWAC is effective, but tell our members today that you would certainly make medium and long-term plan for those three points. Would you like to respond? But then we have a third round. I would not give any time for the secretary to respond. But Dr. Fernando Jung, I would give you two minutes because I want the secretary to give us a consolidated reply. Three minutes for you, just one member in the third round. Thank you, Chairman. He has not answered my questions at all, especially about the so-called Long-Term Welfare Plan Paper of the last term of government. I think it has sunk to the bottom of the sea. The secretary always says that there is a platform with the Hong Kong C S S, that it is looking for land, it is carrying on a dialogue, et cetera. But frankly, you talk about the sector, the sector, and the sector. But what about the recipients and users of the service? Why is it that when we discuss service needs, the users are not included? You only do something cosmetic to say they are represented. And recently, the Lumsom Grant Review, it is said that there should be a best practice manual. And after you've had the consultancy report, you drew up ten, twenty guidelines, but only a few mention the service users. And even so, these have to be decided. In other words, you have not decided whether they would be implemented. In other words, you do not have the service users in your mind. Are you thinking that they are people who receive arms from you? I think that is not a good attitude. I agree with Peter Chan Kwok-Chi in that you must be able to estimate future needs and demands. There are long queues for the services already, and later on, the population will age further. And if you say about thirty thousand people are queuing up for the service, then in N X C, you have given us the tables, the third table. On a yearly basis, in terms of care and attention homes, thirty percent of the waiting list applicants die before they get a place.
in terms of care and attention homes, thirty percent of the waiting list applicants die before they get a place. And then, uh, the nursery homes, fifteen percent. In other words, five thousand odd die before they get a place. And that would account for about eighteen percent of the queues. This is alarming. And you say, uh, uh, as an excuse that people withdraw their applications. But if you look at the figures, the withdrawal numbers only take up eight point seven percent of the waiting list. Why do they withdraw the application? The elderly people are too frail, so they need attention and care. But why do they want to withdraw their applications? And you say there are other reasons for them to leave the central waiting list. I think they are turned away reluctantly. Maybe you told them they are not eligible, but you do not provide the explanation. You say you do not have data on the individual, uh, reasons for withdrawal. So how can you make plans for the future? You have no figures, you have no, um, analysis. You just say the previous mechanism doesn't work, and then you got the long-term planning paper, but you have dismissed it. And now you come back just by stock-taking, telling us what you have done, how hard you have worked so far. But what are the future directions? In the afternoon, we have, uh, the Subcommittee on Long-Term Care. And I, I think I'll carry on there. Thank you. Secretary, would you like to briefly respond? Two, three minutes. Because I will also make a demand on you. You said you need some time to do planning for the next five years to ten years. You said you would work on the elderly and P W Ds, and I said I would add the working poor. So I have told the secretary that he should come back within three months. Okay. First of all, the SWAC has done the study. And in fact, at the last W S P meeting in the last term, we have already adopted the report. It is a mechanism. The SWAC proposed a mechanism, you must understand. And every year through the Hong Kong C S S, we will engage all the NGOs and also the users. Whatever we do is user-based. Every cent should be spent on the users. So it is a user-oriented approach. Every time users are represented. Whether it be the Hong Kong C S S and whether it is a district organization, we will always talk to the users, including the self-help groups. Secondly, Dr. Jung, you mentioned the best practice manual. I think I'll defer to the D S W, because he is the chairman of the committee.
Chairman, I think, uh, Dr. Jung said that, uh, at different forums, whenever we have discussions, we should have the users in mind. As the bureau secretary said, there are measures that we take up directly with the users. But then in the best practices, uh, manual, those have to do with, uh, management issues more. And on the face of it, it doesn't have a lot to do with the users. However, through the mechanisms and measures, in the end, services are going to be improved. And so, uh, in the end, users will be helped. I think we should look at it from that perspective. Okay, Chairman, uh, members, we should, uh, conclude the meeting here. But if members do not object, the clerk will continue to liaise with the secretary that in about three months' time, he should come back with progress. I hope by so doing, the administration will look again at their planning work. As you said, um, aging of the population has a lot to do with, uh, services for the elderly and the P W Ds. And Dr. Nelson Chow is working on a study for the next six to eight months. And I would add, working poor. The administration is providing after-school care and also community nannies. But, uh, they are trying to release the, uh, manpower into the workforce. So I want the secretary to let us know their medium and long-term plans on those three points. If members agree, if the secretary does not object, that is how we are going to conclude the meeting. Thank you. We are adjourning the meeting on the dot. Any other questions? If there is nothing, under A O B meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.